Thank you, my birthday, so lovely.
Surprise.
Surprise. We will continue then, and Mr. Perkins has part B of the town manager's communication.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. I'll just say this, this one time, just for everybody, this is the departure from a normal agenda item for it. We've started doing some action at our work sessions at the end of the month. Council of Chosen is an opportunity to get in, yet another opportunity to get action in for the council when time is of the essence and when it's necessary to do that. So, as a matter of transparency, what we're going to end up doing is to report at our regular meeting, such as where we are tonight, on what item, action, we took at our work session for that. So, that's just for everybody to know, because this is the meeting where we customarily have the biggest attendance. So, at our October work session, we approved two items. We had the approval of Duke Energy Power Purchase Agreement and the Renewal Energy B cert- Energy Certification Transactions Agreement. We also approved a request from Lake Lure to suspend off-season beach use for it. That was with the no swimming issue for it. And that's the only two items we took action on at that meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And if my, I'mma just make one thing that I meant to say in the beginning.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bryant had to leave because he's ill. He was at the meeting, but he's ill and left, which is better for all of us, to be honest with you. None of us need to be confronted with people who are not ill. So, we appreciate his coming, but we appreciate his going home, too. So, we'll move on then to item number five, Council Liaison Reports and Comments. We'll start with Commissioner Doster.
Yes, ma'am. Let's see. ABC Board met on October sixteenth. We now have a full staff at the store. They made sure to tell me the holiday shipments are in. And on November twenty-second, Vogue Sound Distillery will be doing a tasting. And other than that, store operations are running very smoothly and businesses booming.
Fantastic.
Zoning and planning, tonight we will have item B and new business is an amendment for regulating some alcohol sales in Lake Lure. It's more of a public hearing coming up next month. It's just some language that we changed a little bit in the zoning ordinance to kind of filter out some, just make it a little simpler to do. Other than that, we reviewed a chicken recommendation for having chickens in Lake Lure. We're not, they're not finished, quite finished with that one yet, but we should be, we should probably work on that one maybe next month coming up, so. And also, I want to say, I don't know if you want to say this, but remember, our boards need members. And coming up, we usually look at, in December, if you're interested in being on a board, one of the town boards, to contact Olivia, go on the website, you can pull the application, you can pull the advisory handbook. And usually in December, we look at, we'll have some people who will be rolling off that may not want to be on. Some people will stay, we may have some openings. So, if anybody's interested in any of the boards, now's the time, because we will, the boards will make recommendations to council in January and February for March first induction, I guess, best way to put that. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, and we really do encourage people to, some people sort of apply for boards or have in the past, and they're really not sure what the board does. So, if you're talking with anyone out there, encourage them to look on, online and see what that board actually does, what its mission is, so they'll know what their commitments are and make sure it's a good fit for them. There's probably a board that's a good fit for everyone, but everyone's not a good fit for every board, so that'll work out well. All right, Mr. Gioreo.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Board of Adjustments did meet, normal business. Actually, the town manager presents all those details now in the Community Development Section, so I won't go over those again. If there's any policy issues that come up, I'll talk about them. The only thing worth noting is there seems to be a lot of discussion on fencing lately, and the rules have not changed in several years, but there's always a lot of confusion over what kind of fence, particularly the fences that are facing public throughways, the roads, of what you can have, privacy or non-privacy, and how high they can be. And people get confused on that, so it's worth reviewing, if you're going to be doing a fence, it's worth reviewing those rules before you put one in, or else you'll get a visit by our friendly neighborhood community development team. The Lake Advisory Board met, getting ready for next year. The unfinished business for this year, a couple of things are going on. One is, there's a review going on concerning the administration for how to do registrations next year. Now that we have pretty much over ninety percent of the boats in Lake Lure in the system, it provides us an opportunity to take a look at, how can we simplify the admin so that we don't have to fill out brand-new applications every year? So, they're looking at that, I'm confident that they'll be able to streamline that. The second thing is, the fee schedule for next year still needs to be approved. That'll be approved at the Marine Commission next meeting. And the chairman, Kathy Hatfield, will be presenting the yearly review at that Marine Commission.
Perfect.
What I'm going to have to do every year. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right.
I missed the last park and rent meeting, but between the manager giving his report and Mo Bay's going to fill in some blanks in the next item, so.
All right, we'll probably cover that.
That's my report.
All right. And I think that is all of our, that is all of our board reports. So, thank, once again, thank everybody who serves on them. It's a lot of your time and a lot of your effort, and we appreciate it, and it's good for the community. So, that's very, very good. And thank the commissioners who are, and also everybody who clerks them, Olivia doing some and other people doing. But it's, it's a lot of time, but it's meaningful, so we appreciate it. We'll now move on to our next session, which is the public comment. I do have three people who signed up to make a public comment. If there's anyone who did not have an opportunity to sign up when these three are finished, then you may come up to the podium and just state your name and your address. Please remember that you have three minutes, so if you'll just turn that hourglass over when you get up there, you and all of us will know when your three minutes is up. We appreciate that. And also that, you know, you, we do not, it is not our policy to have public comments on things that are on the agenda. So, the first person, Mo Bay. And we do not know who you are, so if you would state your name and your address, that would be lovely.
Thank you. Mo Bay, one ninety-three Deer Trail. Okay, I have two announcements, if I could take just a moment. The Lake Lure Flowering Bridge sold forty-one dogwoods. These are dogwoods that were embellished by the artists and volunteers. We raised almost another six thousand dollars for the education center. So, it was total profit, and we appreciate everybody that bought a dog, a dogwood and came to the bridge. And so, we are feeling very good about all the money that we raised for the education center. And also, if you're talking about volunteers for the board, we need volunteers for the bridge. The Flowering Bridge is always looking for volunteers. And we have a new volunteer in the audience, Dan, and we appreciate you very much, Dan. Thank you, I'm embarrassing him, but thank you. So, anybody that is interested, there's lots of ways to volunteer. Okay, second announcement. The Lake Lure artists had their art show here last Saturday. We appreciate the use of the, of the building. Through the money that each artist pays to be here, plus Laura Crecci made some wonderful desserts and pastries that we sold. And also, we had a raffle. So, at the end of the day, we raised a thousand dollars. So, we put that out to our membership. And one of our members, who happens to run a foundation, it's Keys Open Doors Foundation, has matched that thousand dollars. So, we are donating a two thousand dollars to the Lake Lure Classic Academy, a thousand dollars for the theater program, and a thousand dollars for the arts program. So, there you go.
Thank you, nice.
Okay.
Thank you so much. And I assume if someone was interested in volunteering at the Flowering Bridge, they could go online and find out the person to whom they should talk.
Yes.
Right, good. Next, Dan Gorman. Oh, yeah, we didn't, Mo's never been that short before. Never had that problem. Just turning up.
Just go, just go. You're good.
Hello, Council, my name is Dan Gorman, two forty-one Washburn Road. I'm here to plead that you push forward with a proposal to allow hobby chicken keeping in Lake Lure. I've heard no compelling reasons why continuing to outlaw hens is in the best interests of this town. Although it can be framed many ways, I see it primarily as a property rights issue. I once partaken in activity that is otherwise permissible at the county, state, and national level without infringing on my neighbors' rights. It's easily doable, it happens in countless jurisdictions around this country, and I can't find any reports of a jurisdiction that's legalized hens to then go back and return to prohibition. Now, I propose that very little intervention is needed. In addition to Mike Williams additions for the definitions of run and coop, we can define hobby chicken keeping as four, six hens for non-commercial reasons in section four-one, and add the words excluding hobby chickens to section four-three A. Setbacks are not needed, registration is not needed, more red tape and paperwork for Mike Williams and Rick Carpenter are not needed. Nothing in the language that outlaws hobby chickens would allow a resident to otherwise violate our ordinances. Worries of nuisance can be boiled down to sound attracting pests and creating an unsanitary environment. Sound is not an issue with hens, period. However, if there is a miraculous issue, it can still be addressed under Ordinance Section twenty. It bears emphasizing that a responsible chicken owner will have no issue curtailing other potential worries. But let's explore the worst-case scenario and the resources our town has if a future chicken owner were to be inconsiderate. Ordinance eighteen-two-seven prohibits any accumulation of animal or vegetable matter that is offensive by virtue of odors, vapors, or inhabitants therein of rats, mice, snakes, vermin, et cetera. Ordinance two-twelve, barns or farm animal pens, pastures or enclosures for farm animals which are not kept sanitary or otherwise become a collection place for animal waste, rats, mice, et cetera. Two-fourteen prohibits any other seepage of dangerous hazardous or poisonous liquids. Two-fifteen, other similar rubbish that is offensive by virtue of odors, vapors, inhabitants therein, et cetera. I'm convinced that Mr. Williams' office has plenty of language available to them if a hobby chicken keeper were to violate those issues. And then, as far as setbacks go, the zoning board alluded that it's incredibly difficult to establish setbacks for illegal activity considering the varying zoning terrain and shapes of our lots. I propose that the board, and ultimately the council, should avoid trying to set an arbitrary distance on an approved activity unless there is clear and concrete evidence that the established setback will prevent a specific issue. As I've outlined, the town has existing mechanisms to address any of the concerns that have been raised by opponents of this idea. I've personally witnessed hens being raised on multimillion-dollar properties, small lots, on a fence line with no more inconvenience than two large dogs may cause. If it can be done in small urban and suburban lots all across the country, there's no reason to limit our citizens with arbitrary limits on where they can have four hens, especially without expert input, not just throwing numbers out there. Finally, just one last worst-case scenario, an inconsiderate neighbor does the worst thing possible, drops it right on the property line, is spewing everything onto their neighbor. We have multiple reasons to address it. Whether it's noise, runoff, smell, waste, or other general nuisance, we can take care of that, and we would expect people to take care of that. We don't need additional language. No setbacks are needed for other lawful activity, provided responsible reasonable action is taken. Hobby chicken raising should be no different. Thank you for your time, twenty seconds.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan.
Well presented, thank you very much. We will then move to Mr. Ronnie Wood.
I live on three fifty-five Shady Grove, Lake Lure. We've got a new bar opened up down at Willowbrook. And I live up the creek from them. That music is so loud, you can't even sit outside on your deck. And I'm eight, nine hundred yards away from them. And the music is three or four bites on the weekends when it's pretty. They're all out there with bands and speakers or whatever, I mean, it is loud. I would love for the town to take, do something about this before the summer gets here and they get out there and they've got a whole summer, we have to listen to this. I ain't the only one that believes it's ill about this. But I wanted y'all to know, and I mean, if don't, I'm going to have to do something, and they ain't going to like it. But I ain't listening to this every weekend. We cannot enjoy the woods, and I live in the woods. That's the reason I built there.
We appreciate you bringing to our attention.
I would love to get something done before summer hits.
Thank you.
They've got no approval to do this, I would hope, or any, no permits, and it's all speakers and it is loud.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you very much, Ronnie. Is there anyone else who wanted to make a public comment, who did not sign up? Then, as always, we always appreciate your comments and your insights, and we appreciate the manner in which you present them. So, thank you very much. We'll move on then to our consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as posted?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. It includes four items. One is approval of the October ten regular town council meeting minutes and the October twenty-fifth town council work session minutes. Second is approval of Hydro Utilities Technician Position Description. Three is Resolution number two-three-one-one-fourteen, amending the town of Lake Lure personnel policy. And last is approval of request to waive noise ordinance for lighting up Lake Lure, which I encourage everybody to get to.
Yes.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
The consent agenda is approved as posted. We'll move on then, there is no unfinished business, so we were very efficient, apparently, at the last meeting. We'll move on to new business. Item A, Ordinance Number twenty-three dash eleven dash fourteen, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty, Traffic and Vehicles, Article Four, Traffic Schedules, Section thirty-nine-five, Schedule One, Speed Limits. And I will refer to you, Mr. Perkins.
Yes, Mayor, this ordinance amendment will add, basically, the teeth backing up whether we've always, as we've always maintained, is that town-wide speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour unless otherwise posted on that. So, that is one that will be put in here in the future, that if anyone has a request or a need to, for the town to consider a speed limit of a different amount, the request would need to be coming before the town council approved, then the ordinance would be amended to reflect that change.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll do it, okay. I move that we adopt Ordinance Number twenty-three eleven, Tac fourteen, amending Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty, Traffic and Vehicles, Article Four, Traffic Schedules, Section thirty, Tac ninety-five, Schedule Speed Limits. I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And Ordinance Number twenty-three dash eleven dash fourteen, amending Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty, Traffic and Vehicles, Article Four, Traffic Schedules, Section thirty-nine-five, Schedule One, Speed Limits, passes unanimously. We'll move on then to the next item, Resolution Number twenty-three dash eleven dash fourteen A, setting a public hearing for December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, to receive comments regarding amendment of regulations related to alcohol sales in Lake Lure Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-six, zoning.
Yes, ma'am, this resolution, once approved, will set that public hearing. We have our Community Development Director, Mike Williams, here, in case anyone has any questions regarding that material as it moves forward.
I'll make a motion to...
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Mike, is that okay with you, or do you have something to say about it? Okay.
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three eleven fourteen A, setting public hearing for December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, to receive comments regarding amendment of regulations related to alcohol sales in Lake Lure, Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-six, zoning.
Do I second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In that case, Resolution Number twenty-three dash eleven dash fourteen A, setting public hearing for December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, to receive comments regarding amendment of regulations related to alcohol sales in Lake Lure Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-six, zoning, passes unanimously. All right, moving on. Item C, Resolution Number twenty-three dash eleven dash fourteen V, establishing a capital reserve fund for land, buildings, parks, and other improvements. Mr. Perkins.
Yes, ma'am, we are going to be establishing with this approval a capital reserve for our general fund for the establishment of funds to be held for capital needs, for funds funding land, buildings, parks, and other improvements. This will be done through fund balance amendment or budget amendments that will follow for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from money that had been accumulated to date over various years for the town. Moving forward, our contribution will be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year until the time that that balance gets to six hundred, I'm sorry, let me see.
Million.
A million dollars is the total, and I believe that contribution is going to last seven years. So, that's it.
Okay. Any questions?
I do have one question, Mayor. So, if I, remind me, Mr. Town Manager, these numbers for six fifty, they were already in this year's budget, right? So, you're just moving them over to the capital reserve?
They were closed out in prior year's budgets?
Yeah.
For the public works and also for the TDA.
Okay, okay, so this isn't any new money, this is just taking the money that was already set aside in separate line items, putting them in a capital reserve fund, augmenting it every year, and using it for that purpose.
Yes, sir, what happens for those in attendance is when we have money that we appropriate for purposes and it goes unspent, and the purpose of which is to accumulate that funds for future projects for it. As the years come and they close out, that money goes back into a co-mangled general fund account.
Yeah.
By doing it this way, we basically are establishing a cap reserve piggy bank for the specified purposes and intent that's done in the resolution itself. It can't be spent for any other reason other than that intent that's set up in the resolution, unless otherwise modified in the future. But it also then takes that money, sets it out for its intent, and then gets it out of what we refer to as our general fund balance.
Right. Just to give us a look.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the auditors love it.
Right.
Yep.
Much the same thing we did when we increased the taxes and we accreted that one point six million dollars every year for the damn capital reserve. We know exactly what it's going to be used for. It keeps accreting every year, but that's, it's easy for the auditors, love it, but we love it, too, because that keeps anybody from changing their mind about what we should do with that money that we collected from the adware and taxes. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve the capital reserve fund for buildings, land, parks, and other improvements?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Resolution Budget Amendment, no, Resolution Number twenty-three dash eleven dash fourteen V, establishing a capital reserve fund for land, buildings, parks, and other improvements, passes unanimously. We'll move on then to Item D, Budget Amendment Number three fifty-eight, for capital reserve funding, capital reserve fund for buildings, lands, parks, and other improvements.
Yes, ma'am, this budget amendment is related to the preceding work approved by council. This is the budget amendment to segregate that one, six hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund and move it to the capital reserve.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve Budget Amendment three fifty-eight for capital reserve fund for buildings, land, parks, and other improvements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Budget Amendment Number three fifty-eight for capital reserve fund building, fund for buildings, lands, parks, and other improvements, passes unanimously. Move on then to Item E, Resolution Number twenty-three dash eleven dash fourteen C, accepting updated state revolving loan offer for seven million eighty thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars and replacing Resolution Number twenty-three dash ten dash ten B, accepting state revolving loan offer of seven million. And I think you explained that already.
Yes, that came out in my manager's report, this is the resolution that goes, a part of the resolution, this resolution does go to, for the town to accept that money.
Do I hear a motion?
I have one question, Madam Mayor, before we go forward. So, Hank, one of the numbers that I still would like, and nothing wrong with the resolution, but one of the numbers I really want to see is, once the twelve and the seven hit and we start paying the interest and the, making the principal payments on that, what it does to the water and sewer fund? I kind of, I don't have a good feel for how much debt that fund will absorb. So, now we've got up to nineteen, which I'm comfortable with that, but how much more can we? Are we done? Do we have to raise the water and sewer fund? I'd kind of like to have an assessment, a very simple assessment, to say, we're good to go with this, this is when it's going to hit, and we still can take on so much more debt in the water and sewer fund as we go forward, instead of working in the blind, so. If you could put that on it to do.
Yeah, and just to give you a little teaser on this one, I'm working with Finance Officer, Mr. Ford, to propose a cap reserve moving forward for the water and sewer fund.
Okay, okay.
And what we'll end up with is a plan to kind of integrate the loans, the ARPA money, and the cap reserve.
Good, that'd be perfect. That'd be perfect, and that'd be, you know, because the decision-making right now is, we know it's good, we know this is a great loan to have, but we really don't know, looking in the out-years, what the impact would be and what we have to do, and so, it'll help us clear the smoke.
Yeah, and I'm glad you said that, I don't want to prolong the conversation, but we're going to have probably a proposal and an update on our wastewater treatment plant master plan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's going to end up bringing with it a large capital item itself.
Yeah.
We're going to need to have that discussion to talk about everything.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Any other questions, discussion? Do I hear a motion then?
I move that we adopt Ordinance Number twenty-three eleven, Tac one fourteen Alpha, amending subaqueous sanitary sewer system replacement and sewer upgrades, Phase One, capital project ordinance to reflect additional SRF loan. I'm on the wrong one, never mind. It was close, it was similar. Adopt Resolution twenty-three eleven fourteen C, accepting updated state revolving loan offer of seven million eighty thousand twenty sixty-one and replacing Resolution Number twenty-three ten, ten Bravo, accepting state revolving loan offer of seven million dollars.
Thank you, sir. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution Number twenty-three dash eleven dash fourteen C, accepting updated state revolving loan offer for seven million eighty thousand two hundred and sixty-one, replacing Resolution Number twenty-three dash ten dash ten B, accepting state revolving loan offer of seven million, passes unanimously. Moving on then to Item F, Ordinance Number twenty-three dash eleven dash fourteen A, amending the subaqueous sanitary sewer system replacement and sewer upgrades, Phase One, capital project ordinance to reflect additional SRF loan funds. Mr. Perkins.
This is the companion piece for the acceptance of the SRF funds. This is the capital projects ordinance for the subaqueous system. And when we accepted the additional funds for the SRF, we had to update the capital projects ordinance to reflect that additional infusion of the funds, and then distribute it into where the money is going to be spent. So, that's what this, this piece does as well.
Okay. Any discussion of questions? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number twenty-three dash eleven dash fourteen A, amending subaqueous sanitary sewer system replacement and sewer upgrades, Phase One, capital project ordinance to reflect additional SRF loans.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor? Ordinance Number twenty-three dash eleven dash fourteen A, amending subaqueous sanitary sewer system replacement and sewer upgrades, Phase One, capital project ordinance to reflect additional SRF loan funds, passes unanimously. We'll move on then to Item G, Resolution Number twenty-three dash eleven dash fourteen D, extending the existing agreement to operate water system between the town of Lake Lure and Chimney Rock Village until June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Perkins.
Yes, ma'am. Just for the background for those in attendance, the town of Lake Lure has had an agreement with Chimney Rock Village for the last twenty years to operate their water system for it. That agreement came to an end in April of this past year. We went through an extension of that agreement at that time to look at reworking some of our arrangements with Chimney Rock and develop how we are going to deal with each other financially for the operation of that, that fund. We've had a meeting with their, their staff at Chimney Rock Village, and both their staff and the town staff agree in principle as to what we're looking at as we move forward on the renewal. And we believe that the current agreement, which ends as of December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three, needs to be extended another six months to the end of June twenty twenty-four. It will get the agreement renewal up to a time where it mirrors the start of the fiscal year for each town. And it'll also give the town of Lake Lure the ability to fine-tune the expenses that are going to be working into the operation of that, that agreement moving forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions?
I do.
Okay.
So, the other piece of that, that puzzle is, when do we expect to complete the operational test of isolating our system from Chimney Rock? I think we're close. Are we, the cross-connect, getting the cross-connect tested for downtown? Okay, okay.
The Firefly is, we've got provisional approval from the state, but we are getting the required samples and testing done. And the Firefly will be complete, or the Firefly well project will be complete after that. But the next phase is to do the Task Force Seventeen, which is the cross-connect of all the systems.
Yeah, so, so it's really important that we get that data to know how, by June, so that we know... so that we know what kind of maintenance and what we're really looking at for, for the final version of that, that agreement. So, it seems, seems reasonable that we could get all that data the spring, by the spring? Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think, I, I, I would say these two things are linked together, all right? Before we enter into that agreement in June, June twenty-four, boy, I'd like to know the answers to all those questions before we get to that point.
Well, Commissioner De Oriya, the simple question, the answer on that one is, there is, in our agreement, there is going to be no regular exchange of water between the two systems.
Okay.
We are going to also be working up some accompanying, accompanying memorandums of agreement to be supportive of each other in the event there is an emergency.
Yeah.
But other than that, that's the only time we anticipate an exchange of water between the two systems.
So, you, you're already crafting that, knowing that our system is going to be self-sustaining?
That's right, the, the agreement is being written, we receive no water from Chimney Rock Village, they are self-sufficient, we are as well.
Okay.
Okay.
So, there's no rewriting, based on the data, there's no rewriting that needs to be done? We pretty much know what we're, where we're going to be in June, but we just need to validate it to know exactly where we are.
We are crafting the agreement to match what we anticipate is going to be the fact.
Gotcha, thank you, thank you.
Perfect. Good, all right, anything else, any other discussion, questions? Do I hear a motion then?
I'll, I'll make a motion, but before I do, I want to thank the water department today for checking on a, a potential disaster. The spectrum across the street from my house hit a water line that was on the other side of the meter, but the town did come check it out anyway. So, I appreciate that, and, and anybody that digs a hole anywhere, call eight-one-one.
Yeah, find out where the water is. Okay.
Please?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve resolution number two-three-one-one fourteen delta, extending the existing agreement to operate water system between the town of Lake Lure and Chimney Rock Village until June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number twenty-three dash eleven dash fourteen D, extending the existing agreement to operate water system between the town of Lake Lure and Chimney Rock Village until June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, passes unanimously. Move on then to item H, which is the Nealon Garbage Services Agreement. Mr. Perkins?
Okay, our current agreement is expired, expired at the end of June with Nealon's. We've been operating on a month-to-month basis from that point. We have a new agreement that we have that council's considering adopting and approving this evening, which will be a continuation of, um, the same services that we've had for the last year. The only difference is that they're, they have asked for one hundred dollars more a month for additional costs involving, uh, fuels and other items like that. This, uh, this item is not going to go for the end of next fiscal year, which traditionally we do. It's going to go through the end of this com, this current fiscal year and the entire next fiscal year after that. It will conclude on June, end of June thirty, twenty twenty-five. And at that point, sometime in the, the budget preparation phase that we'll run into in the winter and the spring, we will go out, as is customary in Wright, we'll go out and make sure that we are getting, um, competitive numbers to make sure that everything still is in line.
Yeah.
We, we have utmost confidence in Nealon, but it's always a good idea to double-check for sure.
Second, conference.
I have a question, does this need a resolution number, or is just approving of the check on the green?
I think we just have it as an approval.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. You can do it either way.
Okay, well, if you don't need it, I'll...
All right, you want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion, we approve the extension of the Nealon Garbage Services Agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the council unanimously approves the Nealon Garbage Services Agreement. Um, item I, we have, um, removed from the agenda. Item J, Schnabel Work Order Number Twelve, Task One, Proposal for Professional Engineering Services for Dam Inspection. Mr. Perkins?
Yes, we had the work session, uh, we discussed work, work order twelve with Schnabel. Council at that time, uh, said that they wished to move forward with task number one, that was the inspections of the dam. So, that, uh, that fee is going to end up being twenty-six thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars. That is what we are approving this evening.
All right, any questions, discussion?
I, I think after Stuker shock, we'll, we'll all do...
Yes, we'll have, we'll have discussion again at the...
Yeah, for the second part of the...
Right.
Because it was two pieces.
Yes, yeah, but we, we're moving forward for one, and we are talking again about two later on.
You're gonna, are they going to be able to do this with, uh, all the work that's going on? That they don't interfere with each other? Getting the crane over there for the valve or anything?
The good thing is the place gone down, we'll be able to hook out...
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right.
Fair motion then?
I move that we approve Schnabel Work Order Number Twelve, Task One, Proposal for Professional Engineering Services for the dam inspection.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Schnabel Work Order Number Twelve, Task One, Proposal for Professional Engineering Services for Dam Inspections, passes unanimously. Uh, the last item, K, Budget Amendment Number Three Fifty-nine for Schnabel Work Order Number Twelve, Task One.
Yes, ma'am, that, uh, budget amendment is for the same amount for that, uh, task number one. Removing the money into the, uh, I guess, the project ordinance to, to allow for that work for, from the general fund itself.
Yeah.
All right, any questions? To your motion then?
I move that we approve budget amendment number three fifty-nine for Schnabel Work Order Number Twelve, Task One.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And budget amendment number three fifty-nine for Schnabel Work Order Number Twelve, Task One, passes unanimously. And that completes our agenda.
It's like a record, right?
Um, telling you, especially with some stuff.
And we had cake.
And we had cake too, we took ten minutes out.
We had cake and eat it too.
Had your cake and eat it too, there you go. In that case, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we stand adjourned, thank you for coming. Thank you.
Did anybody else?